We're gonna go ahead and get started with the joint finance economic development meeting. Counselor Brown, I don't know if you have the agenda right in front of you because I don't. So I'm not really sure what this grant is. But if not, Tim or Brian, can you just repeat what we're going over right now?
Yes, absolutely, counselor. First, I wanted to apologize for the little bit of confusion on this item coming before the council. Finance was unaware that OPEC wanted to bring this back through committee, simply because it had been some time since this had been before the council. And we wanted to, you know, have the conversation and remind everybody about, you know, what has taken place to date with regards to the section 108, which was approved by the council back in March of 2021 unanimously. And obviously, that was the application that you approved to be advanced to HUD. So we're obviously very happy to report that on September 22nd, we were informed by HUD that the section 108 funding application that you had approved to be submitted had actually been approved. And HUD made the following public statement. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development today announced that is approving a $5 million loan guarantee to the city of Springfield, Massachusetts to assist in the purchase of vacant abandoned and foreclosed property for the redevelopment and revitalization of the downtown area. This loan guarantee is one of the most successful investment tools that HUD offers to local governments, said Robert Forty, HUD New England Deputy Regional Administrator. We commend the city's elected leadership for their continued commitment to the revitalization of the downtown area. The specific area that the city's application targeted for investment of these funds is the Main Street Convention Center Master Plan area. That master plan area, as you might recall, was also approved, or master plan was also approved by the council unanimously in March of 2021 as well. Generally, the target area is bordered by Harrison Avenue to the north, Union Street to the south, Chestnut Maple to the east, and Columbus Avenue to the west. We are currently advancing this award into a funding approval agreement with HUD, which requires the consent of the council to accept the approved funding as part of the agreement. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have with regards to it.
Well, I just wanted to know what's the amount again? And what is the interest rate on the loan?
Yes, the amount is $5 million. And the the interest rate that's being targeted was, I believe it's 2.1. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, HUD 108 is running off of the LIBOR rate, which usually amounts around 2%.
Okay, 2.15. And how long is the loan term?
20 years from the point in which we do a draw.
Okay.
So we don't have an expected draw immediately. And the other thing, counselor, that we negotiated with HUD was that there would be a three-year deferment period. So that if, for example, we we use the funding in order to do an acquisition, we would have three years to actually divest ourselves of that without triggering a repayment. And ultimately, we would be able to use the proceeds from the sale to basically discharge the debt.
Okay, do we have any properties in mind currently that the money would be used for?
We have no defined properties right now that we would be advancing. I guess there's a number of properties that are of interest in that area. But there would be nothing that's advancing within the next 90 days or so.
Okay, counselors, do you have anyone's hand up? Counselor Letterman?
I'm sorry, we want Counselor Brown, ask first since he's on. It's a co-meeting.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Counselor Letterman, I apologize.
Tim, this is totally off subject. But I really do want an answer when we're talking about this money. Being into sports, when they did that, the actual place to be able to do basketball, you do understand we can't do NBA games, we can't do Division One games. Are we at any time going to think about maybe the birthplace of basketball? They went and they tried to do things out in Connecticut. Is there anyone, anyone thinking about maybe when they did that Mass Mutual Center? I think they probably were off maybe a couple thousand where they couldn't hold certain games. Is anyone thinking about the birthplace of basketball? Is any money going there? I mean, we have to create something where we can host actual games.
Well, there has been a focus on tournament games at the high school level. And that's one of the issues in terms of looking at a sports facility on the riverfront in close proximity to the Basketball Hall of Fame. And requests for proposals related to a sports facility, a multi-sports facility on the riverfront is scheduled to be released soon.
Thanks, Tim. I mean, that's just, you know, I just, that's something that's just been bothering me. And I'll just go let my, I'll let my co-chair continue.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Good point. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question, Tim, about this initiative. So this is a specialized loan program through HUD is what I'm getting. And so then the idea is to target specific buildings downtown to be identified. When you, and then is the idea that the city would purchase these and rehab them and sell them?
The city would have the ability to negotiate a purchase associated with the properties. Do, if it wanted to, it ultimately could do some incremental repairs to those properties and then put them back out for requests for proposals in order to get development interest around them. As you know, counselor, there's been situations, especially in the downtown area, that there's been property owners that have held property but have failed to reinvest and activate their property for substantial periods of time.
Sure. Is this targeted at commercial development?
It would be most, yes, it would be. I wouldn't want to necessarily preclude multifamily housing. But my sense is that this would be primarily commercial buildings.
And then final question is, who would actually be doing the purchasing? Would the city be doing the purchasing or would it be through the SRA?
Most likely through the SRA.
So are we gonna, so who applied for the loan? Is it the city or the SRA?
The city, through the Community Development Department, ultimately applied for the loan. And and we indicated in the application that the SRA could be one of the entities that the city would utilize for the acquisition.
All right. The only reason I ask is, you know, when the when the city purchases property, it has to be approved by the city council. When the SRA purchases property, it doesn't. And so I guess the question I'd like to know is how, what governs the exchange of funds between the SRA and the city of Springfield? Are we able to just transmit funds to them?
Well, the SRA would ultimately have to have a contract with the city for the funding.
So we're gonna authorize this loan right now?
If the funding were to move over to the SRA, you would ultimately approve the contract to move that funding over.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Okay, all right. That answers my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Allen, who's part of the Finance Committee. Thanks for joining and your questions?
Yep, thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Yeah, I missed the very beginning. So when you applied for this, Tim, so if I ask something that you covered in the first couple of minutes, I apologize. But the purpose of this, if this, purpose of this is to expedite development downtown, or you know, what did we say to the people that gave us this credit, line of credit? What would we say was the reason we were applying?
Ultimately, it was for the city to acquire properties that had been vacant, foreclosed upon, not contributing back economically to the area. And as I was saying to Counselor Letterman, you know, as we all know, there's been a number of properties that have languished and have lacked reinvestment and economic activity for years. You know, our thought is to utilize this as a resource to ultimately establish site control, public site control. And ultimately, if we needed to make some, you know, minor repairs to get it to a point that it could come back out into the market and be actively marketed via an RFP for redevelopment purposes.
Counselor Allen, are you still here? No, you're not muted. I didn't show you muted, but.
It looks like, yeah, it does.
It looks like it's not muted. I don't know. Well, well, just if he pops back in, we'll just take over the conversation. Maybe he has more questions.
Yes.
I have a question. Now, I do understand that we do have to bring our downtown area up. As counselors and individuals, if we ever go to New York or Boston, we see people walking around there. It used to be impressive even when we were younger. I remember some of the outlets and things like that. I just want to make sure if these properties are taken over by the cities, will it give maybe like a person who's striving from my area who wants to open up a business and then now maybe purchase? Will they have maybe more leniency? Maybe be able to purchase it based on color, finances and things like that? I wouldn't want you guys to like buy them, redevelop them and sell them to Walmart. I would love it if you guys buy them and redevelop them and sell them to entrepreneurs and mom and pops, Springfield citizens who really want to make a difference and give them the ability to maybe have, I don't know, make it easier for them. Sometimes we, I remember back when we were able to give houses away for a dollar. So if we're gonna do it, let's really do it. And that's all, I mean, if we can do it, Tim.
But that is, that is clearly one of the focuses that we're looking at is to try and figure out, you know, how you can have community reinvestment through building ownership and also be looking at, you know, putting into the covenants relative to the sale and disposition of these properties. You know, some of the issues that ultimately advance the greater good through, you know, providing, you know, lower rents for the entrepreneurial, you know, business that's just emerging. And, you know, try to ensure that you do get more of those smaller businesses into these buildings over time.
Thank you, Tim. I think Counselor Allen is back. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Whitfield. I don't know what exactly happened. But my question, Tim, was whatever we do here, if something actually comes to this money, we we use it in some fashion. It is, it would complement potentially, I believe then we buy three buildings on Main Street recently with American Rescue Plan money. Is that true?
Yes.
And they are in the same target area, if you will?
Yes.
So how does this plan, this loan, and what we would hope to do with this? What is its relationship to the buildings that we've already purchased? And how are they being managed, et cetera? And I don't need a detailed discussion. I'm just trying to get the macro level on that.
No, that's a good question.
It is an alternative, and I think this is an important point for the counselors to consider. This funding source is an alternative funding source to using ARPA funding for such acquisitions. The difference associated with that, however, is that there clearly is a loan that's established through this funding source as opposed to direct grant. And that clearly makes a difference in terms of the economics of the transaction. And in response to your question with regards to the three properties that the city or the SRA currently has ownership of, those are advancing to an RFP, we're developing a pretty extensive RFP process associated with those properties. And we're anticipating that that will be coming out first quarter next year.
Okay, so thanks. Just a follow-up on that. So those properties, is there, do you guys provide some oversight? You guys in your department, Tim, you and Brian, and et cetera. Do you provide some oversight on trying to create some synergy between what happens with the properties that the SRA owns now and what would happen with this 108 loan? If we found something we wanted to do with it, is there?
Well, clearly, just so that we all have a common understanding, the SRA is under my division. So they're part of my division. So clearly, they're working hand in hand with where I am in terms of the redevelopment process of the entire area.
So that's good. So you have, so everything, any activity in either of these areas would report up to and through you?
That is correct.
So that puts you and your area in a position to kind of say, this is, this sounds like a good development thing. This doesn't sound so good. This goes with that. This doesn't go with that. That type of thing. Is that a rule you guys?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I know there's been frustration, just generally wishing that, I'm sure it's shared by you guys and all of us, that we wish there was more development around the casino area. And there's, these are a couple initiatives in the direction of that.
And that's what it is, counselor. It's all about bringing resources to the table so that you can, you can respond when things become mobile.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
It's all about bringing resources to the table so that you can respond when properties become available. And you actually know that you have the resources committed to make those transactions happen. I mean, you know, the market, the market responds very quickly. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of, what do I want to, I guess, the friendliest term I can use is, you know, investors that invest passively and just wait for the area to transform on its own. And then there's active investors who act, you know, reinvest in the properties, ultimately redevelop them and create activation for the whole area. We have a lot of passive real estate investors that are just waiting. And there's others that come into the market when properties go up for sale with the same approach. This allows us to actually come into the market when something becomes available or negotiate with a property owner to acquire an important property that is critical to the redevelopment of the area in a really meaningful way. Because as you know, you know, the city, the city's ability to respond quickly is difficult, especially when the resources aren't pre-committed.
Yeah, well, this gives us, this loan, I assume you're coming to us to, in this committee meeting, to tell us about it and how it works and how it would work. And then you're gonna bring it to the council. We need to approve it?
I, yes, as I indicated, we're moving forward into the assistance agreement with HUD. And we need the council's acceptance of the funding as part of that agreement. And the reason, as I said at the outset of this, I wanted to bring this back through committee. I apologized for going up to the council. Finance didn't realize it was our intent all along to bring this back through committee because the last time you folks were dealing with this was back in March of 2021.
Yeah, well, that's fine. That's good. Thanks for explaining that. Yeah, I mean, I feel good about it. The only other, the 108 loan that I remember most, and maybe there have been a couple others, I don't know, but Brian would remember this, was the one that we did on, what was the old Holiday Inn? What is it like Quinta now, I think? Wasn't that a 108 loan, Brian?
That was a 108. Yeah, so, I mean, we use 108, I would say sparingly because, I mean, we are putting our CDBG entitlement up as a guarantee for the fund. So, you know, we take careful measures before we proceed.
What do you mean? Explain that. Explain that. You're putting your CDBG guarantee up for collateral type?
The guarantee on 108 loans is our CDBG entitlement.
That's the secondary guarantee.
Yeah, beyond the.
Typically, it does not, you know, you can do that as a community, but HUD prefers you to have another source of repayment associated with it. And typically, we would have another source.
So that's like the guarantee that you pay them back?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just remember, counselor, as I was explaining, you know, our approach here is that we negotiated out a three-year deferment from a draw. So we have a three-year window in order to dispose of that property and just pay off the lot, the amount of the line that we ultimately utilized.
And to Counselor Allen, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to understand that part. Go ahead, counselor.
Yeah, that's okay. So what I remember there was that, and I could be wrong, but what I remember there was having the same kind of conversation as we were approving the 108 loan or considering approval of the 108 loan for La Quinta. And the actual payback, I think, was by La Quinta, right? I don't think it was us.
Right, yeah, so.
That is a highly performing loan under the 108.
So what I recall is that the private developer that, for which we were able to procure this 108 loan, they took care of the payback. And we were securing the loan.
That's correct. They basically do that service on the loan.
Yep. And would you contemplate that this would work in the same way? That there'd be a private developer who would, you know, indicate an interest in something or other that we would approve and that they would pay it back or would we possibly be in a situation?
We would have the ability to come in, do the acquisition, and basically put it out for RFP. And our underlying financing would then be assumed by the property owner that was successful under the RFP. So that.
I'm sorry, you're not coming through. I've got my volume on highest and I, you were coming through fine, but I can't hear you now.
I apologize. The, the way it would work would be that the, either the SRA and/or the city would ultimately acquire the property. And then it would put it out for RFP. The successful respondent to the RFP would then assume the obligations of the city with regards to the repayment of the section 108, that portion of the section 108 that was utilized to acquire that property.
And that person or entity would then pay back what they had borrowed.
But the point that I'm making is that there's a freeze period. We have a three-year freeze period where there's, there's no assessment in terms of the deferment. So we have a window of time to basically get that, that whole transaction organized.
Okay. All right, good. Can I have one, ask one other unrelated, well, related but unrelated question? That is that basketball facility that Counselor Brown was talking about, that Counselor Curran was pushing for a few months ago, and I spoke to you, Tim, about it. If that basketball tournament facility were to get, would that fit in this area? Is it part of the area that the 108 loan serves?
It is outside of the target area in terms of the riverfront itself in that, in the area that we were looking at relative to the riverfront. But if that type of facility was contemplated, you know, in the defined geography that we were talking about, it certainly could be eligible.
All right, good. That's good to know. All right, thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
And Tim, one thing I do know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. And one thing I do know, Tim, as far as the actual, I don't know who you guys are dealing with, but I know there are potential investors who really want to build something that can even hold an NBA game.
Yeah, that's one of the challenges that we have, counselors, is actually looking at, you know, not necessarily in terms of any particular geography of the city, but actually finding enough landmass to accommodate the scale of what I've heard and from folks that they want to consider as a development site for this type of opportunity.
And one thing I also want to make sure, when we're buying these properties, is there a way? And I trust you. I trust you, brother. I want to make sure that there is something in writing or something where these mom and pops people will have a break in being able to acquire these properties. Because some of these people have great ideas and all they need is little bump or help from the city.
Yeah, well.
Is there any way we can make sure these ain't corporate people or people? I don't want millionaires to acquire some of these properties. Remember that we help this, you know, we, the city and all of us are helping. And we're saying, okay, we're gonna give it to you guys. We're gonna give it. But how about when they need it? I want to make sure that there's something where we can help them. And I know you'll do it, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, counselor, I am in agreement with you, but I think it's not just limited to the owners. I think it's limited to structures, rental structures that actually allow that entrepreneurial community to thrive.
Yes. I agree with you.
I mean, if you're, if you're coming in with rental structures that are, you know, $25, $28 a square foot, that's not going to be workable for the small entrepreneurial business that is emerging. And we want to see more of those.
Tim, what you got to realize is that there are certain people who are at that level. And what I need that to happen is people kind of, you know, look, I have, that look black and brown, sometimes minorities. There are minorities who have that financial capacity. And I just want you to look out for some of them. I know you do. You're my brother. You know, let's make sure some of those people who do have the capacity look like me, your brother. That's all, man.
There are certainly real estate, you know, LLCs. There are certainly real estate, you know, LLCs that that are formulated for this, you know, type of re- reinvestment, for sure.
Yeah, I I, you know, so.
Thank you.
I understand. That's all I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Tim.
Um, Tim, I do have another question. Thank you, Counselor Brown. Tim, I do have another question. Um, for these particular property or location, are you looking for um housing developments or what kind of development are we targeting right now? Even for the three buildings.
I I I don't eh eh eh.
That were purchased.
I clearly don't want to to, you know, um dismiss any type of use. Um, but I I do think that we are, you know, moving from the market's perspective more towards adaptive reuse of the the upper floors with ground floor activated uses. And eh and that that adaptive reuse could take, you know, a variety of different forms, Counselor. And I I think we have to be more responsive to um some of the creative things that are happening in the market that actually combine both commercial and residential uh uses on the upper floors. Um, you know, eh eh we we've kind of positioned ourselves, you know, or or at least let ourselves be guided by pro- you know, what what's happened in the past that, you know, these upper floors are just all commercial and, you know, I I just don't think that's realistic going forward. Um, given two factors, one, the amount of class A and B spa- or uh B and C space that we have in the market right now. Um, there's a glut of it. And secondly, you know, the the office market, uh eh eh it's uncertain what that market is gonna be um post COVID. And I think that, you know, a lot of eh the the B and C space is pulling down uh the the capacity that the city's Class A office space could actually realize.
Okay, thank you. Um, I got a couple ideas I wanna just run by you, so I'll um set up a personal.
Happy to do that anytime, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have any other questions or comments from the counselors?
Uh, I'm I'm all set.
Okay.
All set.
Again, I appreciate all your time, Counselors.
At that.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming. That's great to have this discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, great information that we could share um at the next meeting.
Thanks again. Bye now.
All right, thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks. Yeah, take care, everybody.
Great evening. All right.